All right, we're gonna reconvene now and we're gonna reconsider, well, reconvene and make sure that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And you all received a list of current vacancies which is included with the agenda. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds is absent. And Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I have a communication from council member Patricia White Boyd, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. There's a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. All right, item listed on the 2:00 PM council document requiring discussion, clarification, or additions or deletions. Are there any?
Um, Mr. Mayor, may I ask the city manager if he could be prepared or have staff prepared to give an overview of 71A and 71B? If I could have that allocation.
Yeah, that'll be no problem.
71A?
A, uh-huh, under City Manager Items Recommended for Action, 71A and 71B, which is on the, um, uh, the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program funds and appropriation of funds fro- from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority and National Opioid Settlement. I just had a few questions, but if he could have someone to give an overview of that, that may answer my questions.
All right, uh, thank you. We'll note that. All right, any other topics of discussion? All right, uh, we're now down to briefings and I will call on a city attorney to introduce the briefing.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. There are three proposed code changes that are before you, and if I could take two of the ones I think will be rather straightforward and easy to talk about. Uh, we'll be talking about the cur- um, Youth Athletics Review Board, which is, um, just real, real quickly, that is increasing the membership from five to seven members. Uh, Michael Clark's here, so he can talk about that, but it's my understanding from, uh, Director that he believes this will increase the diversity and participation within the Youth Services Board, and seven is a very common number that we have amongst our board, so that's why the proposed change on that. Any questions? The other one I think that's rather straightforward is currently under the code, you can't have commercial activities over in Carvins Cove, but if we are using the Cove for a festival or whatnot, in order to have food trucks or things of that nature, amend the code to allow with a permit that we could have, uh, that type of commercial activity, if you will. Um, I think it'll lend itself to better utilization, uh, of Carvins Cove for the public and for festivals and events, particularly, I suspect, mountain biking events. Again, Mr. Clark, uh, Michael Clark is here to discuss and answer any questions that council might have.
Let me, you get any question?
Oh, no, I do, I am curious whether or not they're still, uh, doing that $5, um, fee for vehicles just to even get out of your car.
You're talking about at the Cove, at the Cove? Yes, and that's, that is, that's established by the Water Authority.
I know, it has nothing to do with us. I just wanted to put it out to the public. They're charging us $5 to have my kids get out of the car and take a photo.
I think it's actually more than $5 now.
Yeah, I think they raised it, yeah.
So, so, so now public is more. How much is it?
Seven?
Seven fifty. So be prepared to pay 7.50 if you want to get out of your car and have a photo.
Let me make sure I'm hearing that. It costs you 7.50.
Yeah, my, yeah, I had my grandbabies, yes, they said if you get out of your car, you have to pay. So, so I wanted to get out of the car and walk up to the, the, you know, the walkway and take a photo, so they, they charge you. If you get out of your vehicle, you are charged, but it has gone up to 7.50. Just so, just so the public is aware of that, so you don't get caught out there with your grandbabies and no cash.
Can you share, uh, Michael, what's the, what's the reason behind that? What is that?
The, the charge?
Yeah.
Uh, that's at the marina that's managed by the Water Authority, and they have a, a parking fee, um, associated with, with using the, that area. Uh, the same thing goes if you, if you go on the, um, the side that, that we manage, uh, if you park at Bennett Springs or Timberview, uh, you are supposed to pay a, a day use pass to use the trails. Um, the, uh, Water Authority staff patrol that area, um, they monitor the fire road, that type of thing, but, um, I, I was unaware that they would charge you just to get out.
Yeah, they said if you got, got out of your car, I got out to, uh, take some photos with my grandsons. It was last year. I told the city manager about it, 'cause I didn't realize it was the, um, Water Authority, 'cause I said, just to get, you know, I, we just got out to take some pictures, and they said, yes, ma'am, if you get out of your car, you, you have to be charged a fee. And at that time, I think it was five, but now it's gone up.
Yeah, they, they have increased their fees. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what, what it is right yet, but, um, we meet quarterly with Water Authority staff and, and just about Carvins Cove specifically, so we can, we can chat with them a little bit about that too.
Yeah, I was going to ask since the city manager serves on the authority, perhaps there's something he could address with the board when they meet. He, he, well, he knew that already.
Right, but I just wanted to put that back out there.
Now, now it's public, public information.
I'll just say that it's modeled just as every single state park in the state of Virginia. As soon as you drive through that gate, you pay to go in.
So it's like a state, they, they treat it as a state park?
Yeah, and then there's different fees for, different fees if you're gonna put a boat in.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying. And if you treat it like a state park, I do get it. Yeah. Yeah, just stay in your car. Yeah, I was just trying, I was thinking about it like, like city Carvins Cove, not a state. Thank you. Disregard, city man. Thank you, Mr. Clark. That, that, I, I was just way out of line on that one, so you're fine. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I just wanted to verify that this is gonna, this doesn't allow anybody to continue, or to like swim in, uh, Carvins Cove? No, no, so the, uh, the marina and the, the lake itself are both owned fee simple by the Water Authority and are outside of, of the, what's considered a city park? So all of that is still managed by the Water Authority, and they're still not gonna allow anybody to, to swim there. Good, okay, thanks.
I think this is good to a lot of the food trucks, so you can have events out there. I think it's really good.
Okay. Another question. Thank you, Michael.
And finally, there is, uh, currently, there are three boards that Parks and Rec's Department is responsible for. There's Mill Mountain Board, as well as, as you saw earlier, the Youth Athletics Board. The only one that is not codified is the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, or PrAB, and this is a, um, work with the city manager and work with the Director to come up with language establishing the purpose. Um, this is modeled, I believe, after several other localities to, um, codify that board as well and further establish their purposes. Um, I understand there may be some discussions to whether it needs to be codified, and of course, do whatever. Either way, I believe that the process of going through this is beneficial, because I think that even if it's not codified, you're seeing the model that we will use to amend the bylaws, so that we can address the purpose. That way, everyone knows what their purpose is, what, that we're hoping that the PrAB will be able to address. And again, um, Michael Clark is here to answer any questions on that. I do realize there's another copy up there and need to make some changes. It's my fault that typos were there, so we're gonna clean those up. If you choose to have this at 20th, we'll have that all straight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Senator, Ms. Moon?
Um, I appreciate you saying that, uh, ci- uh, city attorney, because I was one with the concerns about whether it needed to be a permanent, a permanent body. Um, I know we put in, um, the, um, I guess the athletic review, it became permanent. I didn't, um, at the time did not even think about it needing to be. We, I understand what it is for a permanent committee, either by state, by charter, or by code, and, uh, for this particular one, I don't see the purpose being, uh, uh, to call it for permanent. It, it still can advise and, and still have the same effect. I just don't see the purpose behind making it a part of a permanent, putting it into code, unless you can convince me otherwise why it should be.
Well, this was driven by, um, current and former advisory board members more so than, than staff-driven. Um, I will say that it is a requirement of our accreditation to have a, uh, an advisory board, uh, whether it's appointed by council in a permanent or ad hoc.
Right, I can, I mean, I have nothing against it being, staying as an advisory board. That I see they still can advise, they can still recommend, they can still work with staff and, 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 and the council. I don't see what strength they're getting by becoming permanent.
I think their, their argument was just, uh, further legitimizes them as a, um, as an advisory board and not just an ad hoc board that can be, uh, terminated or just not, not being met at all. Um, the, uh, former and current members wanted something just a little more formal than that, um, so that they can establish their standing as, as the advisory board for the, for the department.
I still think it can, they can still be able to stand and, uh, do what they need to do in advisory capacity. I don't think making them permanent is gonna give them any more power. Um, I didn't see anything in there that would suggest that. So I would prefer it stay as an advisory board, as an ad hoc, because they still are able to fulfill their purpose.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to, to agree with that, because it's, it's a bad time to come before me, because I'm troubled by, uh, this advisory board and the handling of the Washington Park pool issue. There've been some things that I've learned from other sources that I don't think they should have been involved in, but they were. Uh, so I'm
Right, e- even, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, even under their purpose, uh, you know, if they were, you know, working with the city manager and the council, again, uh, they, they relate to parks and recreation matters. Um, the, uh, long range master plan, um, you know, uh, that, to me, that's an administrative thing. If you feel, you, you know, they can give you some guidance and you, you're gonna take those recommendations. Um, even with, uh, planning and program in individual parks and facilities, I'm not too sure. Uh, that's something I would yield to the director, which is you, or the manager. Uh, even down to some of the other things that I see here. I have no problems with reviewing recommend policies as requested by you. Those kinds of things are okay, but I'm just thinking they're getting a little too far down in administration, wanting to be, uh, 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 more than an advisory, and then they would expect you to take those recommendations off a council to adopt, than to just look at them as such, recommendations.
Sure, and, and we've made it clear to them that, that even if this does go through, their, their role is still in advisory capacity. They're not a policymaking board. They wouldn't supervise any of the projects that we do or the staff that we have. Um, the role that they would play in the long range planning and the individual park planning, uh, is more as a conduit to their respective communities, where, where they live, helping us get the word out, uh, providing their own individual expertise from different fields that they've worked in. You know, currently, we have a former park planner on the board that spent some time in Prince William County, so I, I feel like they have some things that they can convey to us, um, but they certainly wouldn't be down into specific administrative tasks like selecting the, the consultant to do the work, or making the award, or even writing the plan for that matter. Uh, their, their role would still strictly be advisory.
Then therefore it doesn't need to be permanent, because to me, the assumption would be they are having more power as such as what the, uh, planning commission would have, what the BZA would have, and that's what I'm trying to not do here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Clark, I just have one question. Do you know what the impetus was for this change at this point, or did something happen, or did, did, did something, were they not able to do something that they wanted to do?
No, it, it was brought up, um, a couple of years ago, uh, when Mr. Pretty was the chair. Um, he had, had, had made mention during one of our meetings that, uh, of the three advisory boards that we have, um, the, the main advisory board was the only one that wasn't codified, um, and had questioned, uh, whether or not that allowed the, the abor- the board to still exist, um, and, um, that, that's kind of what got the ball rolling. And then we discussed it a little more in our, uh, joint meeting in July, um, and they had expressed their desire to, to become a, a permanent board.
Okay, so, what, what are your thoughts on that, I mean?
It didn't, it didn't impact anything. Um, uh, for me, it's, uh, administratively, it, it's not gonna change anything for me one way or the other. I understand where they're coming from and wanna see the, the legitimacy and, and the, uh, be on the same, um, level as the other two advisory boards, uh, for our, our department, uh, but otherwise their, their function would go unchanged. Um, they, you know, would still be appointed by, by you all, they still have terms, uh, they would still advise us on, on various matters.
So is this the only one that you're saying that is not a permanent board?
Uh, of the ones for parks and recreation, yes. I have, I have three, uh, youth athletics and then Mill Mountain, and then this one.
Yeah, now, Mill, excuse me, can I say something, uh, Ms. White-Boyd, can I just say, uh, now even on the Mill Mountain, although it may be permanent, it's really still, uh, advisory, because you changed up, I recall when we changed up their function or their purpose, where you don't even meet on a monthly basis, I think you meet.
Six, six times a year.
Right, so it's really, uh, although we still have it listed as a permanent, it's really ad hoc per se and not as a permanent body. Uh, and the youth athletic just came on, which I'm still trying to, uh, think why it really is a permanent one as well. Uh, so even so, the, the, even with all three, they really could have just been in advisory capacities.
Yeah, I think, I think the impetus was really for consistency sake.
Yeah.
Um, just staying the same as the other two.
Yeah, but I still just think there's just advisory. I think we're just getting to the point where we want to make everyone permanent. Uh, everybody gonna continue to come and wanna say, I wanna be a permanent body too, when they still have the same functions as ad hoc, except that, uh, you're, you're codified, more or less be the state charter or by the code. Yeah.
All right, uh, any other council members, have any thoughts on this?
And, Ms. Mayor, like I said, the process, I think, was very beneficial to help us really focus and to put in writing. So one way or another, even if council doesn't choose to move this matter forward, we will utilize this to amend the bylaws so that it clarifies the purpose of the PrAB.
Yeah, I guess that was gonna be something I would add, two, two things I would add or ask of the council. So the intent right now is to, as we've done in the past with these, we would brief you as we are today about the idea and the concepts in it, and then if everything was okay, we would come back at the next meeting with the actual code. So I guess, question number one on this one is, do you want us back at the next meeting for action on that item, or do you just wanna set it aside for right now, um, based on this briefing? That, that's question number one, and then second part of it goes back to something the city attorney just said, which is, regardless, I do think for some of the reasons that have been stated here and also what, what Michael has indicated, I do think that the advisory board would benefit from some, some clear purpose statements from you all, um, so that you're clearly conveying to them what your expectations are of them. You know, those are in this draft ordinance, so even if, this, even if the decision is to not go forward with them as a permanent advisory or a code change, I think at some point we would like to get some response from you all about those purpose statements for the reasons that were just mentioned. But the most important is, do you want us to bring back the item at the next council meeting for action, or do you just wanna set it aside for right now?
Personally, I think it would be, um, more appropriate to have all of us present so that we can all be engaged in that conversation. Um, so I would, I would move that we just table it until the next meeting.
Or how about until the December first meeting?
First meeting in December.
So that we can do another, so that we can do another briefing?
Right.
Yeah, 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 so that they all hear the same thing and so that we can all be on, on, on one page.
Yeah, just bring it as a briefing, not as action.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, and that would also help us respond to, or the purpose items.
Some of the questions and stuff, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Let me just ask you here, what I'm reading, uh, the advisory board will go from, well, not from about seven, but to nine members. Am I reading something?
So the advisory board currently has, uh, 11 members.
So it would reduce?
And it would be reduced down to, to nine.
Okay.
Yeah, and before that, uh, we had, we've had upwards of 15 on it, and we've systematically reduced it over time. Um, and with, with 11, we have, um, pretty steady attendance, uh, but bringing it down to nine would bring it more in line with other appointed boards.
And the timing is such that with it going from 11 to nine, no one gets kicked off, as I understand.
Um, yeah, we have, we have one that would, uh, finish out his term in March, uh, and then he was ineligible to be reappointed anyway, so we have a vacancy, and then hi- his would fall off, so nobody would have to lose their, their spot. We'd have nine.
Well, I, I, I agree with this rate until we have a full, hopefully we'll have four in number of council of people here. But I, before you leave, uh, Michael, I want to talk to you about something I found out about a couple of members anyway of this board, advisory board. All right, thank you.
And that's all of our briefings.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I'll bring the other two for action on November 20th, and then this one will come back in December. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Spencer. All right, is that all of the briefings?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, well, we'll go in recess until our 2:00 PM meeting here in council. Thank you.